I'll call this, uh, meeting to order on, excuse me, Monday, June the 6th, 2015. Want to welcome everyone. Tim Miles, elder of Cumberland Community Church at 3110 Sports Avenue, in the green shirt. He's going to come forward and give us our invocation and listen to the place to flag. So would everyone please rise?
Thank you. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you with praise because of who you are. We offer up our thanks because of all that you do. Thank you for a wonderful day. Thank you for the great nation in which we are privileged to live. I pray for that nation and for all the leaders, that you would give them wisdom as they do all the work that they do. And Father, I thank you for that little bit of heaven here on earth that we call Smyrna. And I pray for this mayor, the city council members, Father, that you would, you've instituted governments, and we pray for each of them, that you would give them wisdom in the work that they perform, help them to remember who they represent. It's such an honor to serve, but with that honor comes great responsibility, and I just lift them up to you now. I pray for the meeting tonight, that everything that is said and done would be kind and efficient, and that it would be, bring glory to you. For all these things, we offer our praise and our thanks in that name that is above every name, the strong and powerful name of your son, Jesus. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
For those folks that, uh, not familiar where Cumberland, uh, Community Church is, Spring Road, and hang a ride at the Burger King, and it's a good church if you're looking to change or want to go back to a new, it's a neat church.
We have a few more empty seats.
You have a few more what?
Empty seats.
Yeah. I've been told if you wear, uh, a sport coat, you're overdressed, so. Good folks out there, thank you very much for coming up. Uh, item two is agenda changes, the only, um, we've got several items that are going to be tabled on here, the only changes on the agenda, um, B and C, those were going to be tabled for July the 20th, they will be tabled to August the 3rd. Um, I think those are the only changes. Uh, under Merrill's report, we did not have anything tonight. Um, land issue, item four is land issues zoning is an annexation, item maids, 2015, dash 124, uh, public hearings, honor requests, Z 15 dash 002, rezoning of the subject property from residential townhouse district to general commercial for use of property for commercial purposes, 5.039 acres, vacant land lot property off South Cobb Drive, at the terminus of S.K. Drive, William L. S.K. Can I get a motion, Ms. Wilkerson, that we table this to July the 20th?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, move to make a motion to table, um, item 4A, 2015 dash 124, um, the zoning request for, um, rezoning the subject property from residential townhome district to general commercial, um, for the use of the property for commercial purposes, 5.039 acres, land lot 342, um, off of the, off of South Cobb Drive at the terminus of S.K. Drive, to be tabled to July 20th, 2015.
Motion second to table, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. That is approved 7-0. Item 4B, under the land issues zoning annexation portion of the agenda, is 2015 dash 165. Also, C is 2015 dash 166, I'm going to just turn this straight over to Ms. Nullwich, and she can make the motion on both those without me having to read it, and you read it.
Thank you very much, yeah, it is going to be, um, item, this time I move to table item 4B, 2015 dash 165, this is the public hearing for zoning request, Z 15 dash 009, it's rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of two single-family homes, this is 0.35 acre tract, land lot 489, 2680 Grady Street, the applicant is Pritchard Builders Incorporated, this will be tabled until August 3rd, 2015.
Motion second to table item 4B to August the 30th, 2015. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item 4C, Ms. Nullwich.
Thank you, sir, yes, at this time I move to table item 4C, it's 2015 dash 166, this is also, will also be a public hearing for zoning request, Z 15 dash 008, it's rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of five single-family homes, 1.27 acre tract, land lots 488 through 1091, 1107 and 1121 Bank Street, this is Pritchard Brothers Incorporated, to be tabled until August 3rd, 2015.
Motion second to table this, um, item to August the 3rd, 2015. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Five is privileged licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business, A is, um, RES 2015 dash 02, accept the provisions of the Cobb County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, 2040 Resolution, authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Toni Jo Howard, please give us the background, please.
Yes, Cobb County DOT has recently completed the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Update 2040, and has requested that all cities and the county formally accept this plan. The infrastructure plan enables us to meet the changing needs of our community through a performance-based approach to system investments, improving access, safety and security, managing congestion, and driving economic competitiveness. The projects included in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan that impacts Smyrna specifically were already included in our SPOS programming, and so they have indirectly been accepted. Staff is recommending approval and asking to give authorization for the mayor to execute any related documents.
That is, uh, Mr. Corky Welch.
Scott, I'm, I'm looking here, we discussed, uh, in a, in a prior meeting, it's, it is table 15 that we're, we're accepting in it?
Yeah, that, that's right, yeah, it will be attached to the resolution, and that's an itemization of all the projects that you guys have already approved.
Ms. Mayor, I don't see anybody that could bring any more to it than what Toni Jo has already. Um, I, I would like to make a motion that we accept the provisions of the Cobb County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, 2040 Resolution, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, with the provision that we are accepting those items listed only in table 15, which are for the Smyrna, Smyrna, City of Smyrna only. And with that, I'd like to make a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve this resolution, any discussion? Wait, Ms. Nullwich.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to comment that, you know, on this list, if you look at the recommended projects that are specific to Smyrna, we already approved nearly all of them through the 2016 SPOS process, so in essence, we already have voted for them. This is really just, as far as I can see, a bit of an affirmation. But I want to say with regards to BRT, it's been in the news, it's been the subject of a lot of contention and debate, there will be BRT buses, you know, if this proposal goes forward, they'll be moving through Smyrna. We already have buses in Cobb that link with MARTA buses at the Arts Center MARTA Station. We're already paying for buses as taxpayers in Cobb County, so I, I'm, as far as I can see from, from my initial reading, I'm okay with having buses, since we already are paying for buses, I'm okay with having buses that are faster and more efficient than the ones we already have. We've got to keep in mind that in the metro area, and I'm talking about the overall 17-county metro area, there have been some major employers that have closed their offices in the northeastern suburbs and moved into town to Sandy Springs and to Midtown, and they have specifically cited the access to MARTA transportation as the reasons why they moved. I just feel like in Cobb, we really need to keep that in mind, it is a lot cheaper to be proactive than to be reactive in the long run if we're to lose any major employers, and it's a lot easier to discuss things now than to discuss them in post-mortem after we get an announcement that one of our Fortune 100s moved inside. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Anybody else, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Item 6B, um, Resolution 2015 dash 03, approval Resolution R 2015 dash 03, extending the emergency 9/11 surcharge, can you give us the background on that, Ms. Toni Jo Howard?
Yes, during May of 2001, the city council had approved a resolution that authorized the city to collect the $1.50 monthly fee from telephone subscribers within the city to offset the cost of providing 911 telephone service to residents. This resolution has to be extended annually, and so that's why it's coming before you tonight.
Move of approval.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0. Item C, informal businesses, uh, Resolution 2015 dash 04, approval, the renewal of SunTrust Corporate Resolution R 2015 dash 04, and certificate of incumbency, Ms., uh, Toni Jo Howard.
Yes, this is another one that we're required to do annually, this just updates the information for our credit card and to identify the officials responsible for using those cards.
This is, I'm sorry, this is 6C?
Yes.
Yes. At this time I do move to approve item 6C, it's Resolution 2015 dash 04, this is to approve the renewal of SunTrust Corporate Resolution R 2015 dash 04, and the certificate of incumbency.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more? Approved 7-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits, we have none, item 8 is consent agenda, Ms. Howard, would you please read the consent agenda for councils approved?
Yes, we have item 2015 dash 201, approval of mayor and council meeting minutes for June 15, 2015. We have 2015 dash 196, award RFP 15 dash 043, flat body dump truck to the lowest bidder, weighed Ford for $45,544, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item 2015 dash 197, award RFP 15 dash 041, crew cab truck for the water sewer department to the lowest bidder, weighed Ford for $61,960, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item 2015 dash 198, award RFP 15 dash 042, for a knuckle boom trash loader to the second lowest bidder consolidated disposal, meeting specifications for $129,312, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item 2015 dash 195, award RFP 15 dash 044, to 2016 F-750 dump trucks, to the lowest bidder, weighed Ford for $78,877 each, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved 7-0. Committee reports will start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennell tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All quiet, we had a 4th of July holiday celebration over the weekend for an awful lot of families, the fire department reports no deaths or serious accidents in the first year of a firework-friendly 4th of July, so hopefully everyone had a safe and happy holiday weekend accordingly. Uh, the police department want to report that as of July 1st, we now have police camera policies approved and in place, uh, we are now with a full complement of cameras with the policies in place to implement, and that assures, I think, a higher degree of confidence both among the public relative to our public safety officials being safer, but also the public as well, uh, and I appreciate the work, and if you have an opportunity to do the same, please thank our public safety personnel every day when you greet them and thank them for the work they do to stand, uh, to defend us every day, our personal safety, our possessions, our businesses, and our community as a whole. With that, Mr. Mayor, uh, oh, I did want to make mention, I'm having a town hall meeting in Ward 7, it's ostensibly about an annexation application that has been withdrawn and is yet to be submitted, so I'll talk about any issues, but we had it scheduled July 14th, it's Thursday night, it'll be at Fire Station 5, uh, which is just off the East West Connector on Cooper Lake Road, and that'll be at 7:00 PM in the evening. I yield.
Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I hope everyone had a wonderful Independence Day holiday, um, things looked, uh, exciting in Smyrna, I know a lot of neighborhoods had get-togethers and parties and, uh, events that involved families, and, uh, you know, it was a nice time, uh, attended a number of those events, and, uh, you know, I think people in Smyrna really enjoyed the holiday, so hopefully everyone is still safe and sound. One of the interesting things about the holiday and about July 1st and new state laws that come into effect is, uh, and this issue came up, uh, talking with some citizens, um, of course, the state legislature approved all kinds of fireworks now being legal to use in Georgia for the first, for the first time. Uh, we recently had a citizen who was cited by the police for using a BB gun to kind of plink chipmunks and squirrels off his bird feeder, and, um, and that fine is somewhere around $100. And it just strikes me as odd that you can fire rockets at the squirrels, or you can fire, um, Roman candles, or throw M80s at them, uh, but you can't, you know, fire a BB gun, which would seem a whole lot better. That's just one of the things that, you know, I'd hope that we can take a look at as time goes on, and obviously, there are some issues I think the state legislature needs to address. It's okay to shoot fireworks, that's great, I love them, but, you know, at 2:00 in the morning, that seems a little late, and, you know, maybe the state legislature can reevaluate that time. There's no reason to be shooting fireworks at 2:00 in the morning, even if it's New Year's Eve, knock it off by 12:30 or 1:00, so people can sleep. But it was, uh, it was interesting, and you could see fireworks all over Smyrna, and it, um, you know, I know a lot of Smyrna folks had a good time. Uh, it was also my pleasure to represent the mayor and council at the graduation and promotion ceremony for the Smyrna Fire Department on June 19th at Life Church, appreciate Pastor Shel Osburn hosting that for the fire department, uh, there were some proud men and women, uh, you know, being recognized in that ceremony, and we appreciate what they do. Uh, with that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Bogson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to remind everybody of the concert series at the Smyrna Market Village, um, in the green, uh, this coming Saturday, July 11th, and also, I want to remind everybody, there is a movie by men, a movie by Moonlight, and the movie is Annie, and that will take place on July the 18th. And also, I'd like to announce that I'm having a Ward 5 meeting next Saturday at the Wolf Center at 10:30 AM, and I'd like to invite anyone who's interested to come. Um, one of the items that we're going to talk about is the rezoning, uh, that is on South Cobb Drive at S.K., so, um, I would like to have y'all come, so with that, I yield.
Mr. Mayor, I had, if I might, one of our sharp viewers caught the fact that I misspoke about the day of the week, it is next Tuesday that my town hall will be on the 14th, the date was correct, the day of the week was not. Thank you.
Ms. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be very quick this evening, just to remind everybody to continue to support a couple of events that we have, one is Food Truck Tuesday, and finally, uh, Smyrna Fresh Produce Market, uh, Food Truck Tuesday, every Tuesday night at Broner, and, uh, Fresh Produce Market Saturday morning, uh, from 8:00 to 12:00, uh, in the church parking lot, so continue to come out and support those, uh, those things that are, are important to a lot of people, and, uh, just continue to come out and support them, thank you.
Ms. Terry Nullwich.
Yes, hi, everybody, um, discerning viewers and drivers have probably noticed the yellow signs out in front of the John Col Plaza corner at Spring and Atlanta Road, I wanted to let everyone know that there is going to be an open house to discuss the submitted plans, it's going to be this Thursday, July 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the community center, this is a drop-in open house format, which means that you do not need to plan on being there for two hours, you can come, you can look at the renderings, you can ask, um, any questions you might have, representatives from Halpern Enterprises will be there as long, as well as a few members of city staff, and, um, I'll have more information about this on my Facebook page, and also in my Ward 3 newsletter, my Facebook page is facebook.com/terryward3, and you can also shoot me an email, and I'll reply back, my signature has that in it. Um, there's a concert on the green this Saturday, July 11th, that will be a lovely way to spend the evening, and I am not going to be at the meeting on July 20th, I will be back here on August 3rd, when I hope to be in much better health, with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Thank you. Um, well, I hope everyone had a very, uh, interesting 4th of July, I think the legislature went out of their way to provide us with some interest in that, I didn't think too much about them being able to shoot fireworks till 2:00 AM, until I was up till 2:00 AM because I couldn't sleep, and, um, because one of my neighbors went out, I guess, and bought one of those really huge boxes of fireworks, and he had had fireworks all evening long. The sad part was my little dog is now terrified to go outside, he's convinced that if you go outside, you're going to run into somebody shooting fireworks, so hopefully they, when they reconvene, uh, they will change that and make it a little bit more reasonable. Midnight would be fine, 2:00 AM is too much, but, maybe, I'm just getting old. I mean, for heaven's sake. I know, I'd rather just go see the fireworks at a fireworks display. Um, anyway, thank you so much, and I hope you have a good evening and all, and with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had a very informative town hall meeting for Ward 1 here in the Council Chambers on June 24th, um, I'm going to thank all the staff again for the great presentation that they did for everybody, lots of information, we will be having another one soon, and hopefully by that time, the digital sign on Spring Road will be working, so everybody will be able to see it, I know those signs that we put out before were, were kind of small, so next time we'll have better visibility. If you did not, were not able to come, and you want to call me to see the Spring Road, um, drawings and views of what we're doing on Spring Road, the new improvements and upgrades, you can call me at City Hall, 678-631-5306, and we'll make an appointment for you to come to my office and see it, so, thank you very much for your attention and good evening.
Ms. Toni Jo Howard, anything?
No, sir.
Scott Cochran? Heather Horn? Well, we do not have a show cause hearing, got a couple of people signed up for citizens' input, uh, first is Alec Bakri of 3459, um, Shawnee Trail, subject is, uh, comments.
My first comment tonight is, uh, a comments that were made by Councilman Welch, a couple of meetings ago, on the much-improved Concord Road. Let's take it from South Cobb Drive to Atlanta Road, that entire side all the way down was just sidewalks, now you've got people coming out of Concord Circle, must take a right and do a U-turn to go back left. Additionally, that's true about Lee Street, that's an inconvenience. Now, coming back from Atlanta Road, you've got some empty businesses there that I still haven't heard from anyone what they're going to do with, and I've always believed that that was a quaint area there, remind me of New England with the small shops, quite, quite a few of them have gone now, but taking it from Atlanta Road back to Kings Springs and that structure is, again, just sidewalks, and from the, uh, unfinished structure at Kings Springs, uh, to the Vickers Hardware, they've, uh, cleared out some area there, and even one street that went into Concord, closed. We've always been under the belief that, uh, that was, project was going to be done for 20 million plus to help through traffic and be improved like Spring Road was, that has not happened. Now, South Cobb Drive handles 200 times the traffic that Concord Road has, they don't have center medians, and people get along very well, those center medians are disaster in that project. The, uh, turn lanes, and again, that could have been used for something a lot more feasible. People don't understand it, we still have two-lane and two-lane, nothing was done for through traffic. You had a light at McCauley, correct, and ref, uh, resurfacing, which is good, but the only thing that we can see that's good beside those two is they finally removed the barrels after two years of inconvenience. I don't see any improvements on that street for through traffic, now there have been people that have been going out, McCauley on that light had it green, but yet people are making U-turns on red to go back towards South Cobb Drive, a couple of people said they almost missed a couple of people, turn, making forced U-turns. Again, we don't understand why the, uh, that center median is an absolute waste that took over two years of inconveniences to tourists. My second comment is, now that the budget's been done, I hope someone on this council will bring up term limits for November to be put on the ballot. Again, we had it on the ballot at the last election for liquor thing, uh, liquor vote, we can certainly have it, again, Kennesaw and Marietta are going to have it next year, I have heard no, no comments from this council on yea or nay, and anytime you can get the people to express their opinions on a subject, it should be on the ballot for the majority to see where they stand, that's open government. If this council fails to put it on the ballot, that will be a black eye on what open government means in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Marilyn Blackwell, uh, 1054 Huntington Trace, comments? Is she here? There she is.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello, Mayor.
Counsel, I just done a positive note, Ron, um, want to kind of piggyback on what Ron said about our public safety, uh, personnel, I am honored to be on the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation Board, and just wanted to bring it to your attention and personally invite you to the event that we will be hosting on September the 12th, which is our, um, Country Chic Heroes Benefit Gala, I'm sure that you'll receive your own invitation, but I want you guys to come out and join us as well as our community, because I think it's important that we show our public safety personnel how much we really do appreciate what they are doing to help keep us protected and whatnot, so that's it.
That's it? I think I got something on that today, shining a light for a safer community.
Yes.
Yeah, good deal, thank you very much. Um, last person is Doug Stoner, uh, former, our former state senator, he's got an announcement to make.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon, it's good to see the council tonight. Uh, earlier today, just wanted to come here to let you know, earlier today, I officially announced I'm going to be seeking Ward 6, and for those at home, just so there is no confusion, that is an open seat, because obviously, the current incumbent is looking at running for a different office. at running for a different office, and I made this announcement, and I'm very honored in the past in serving the neighbors in Ward 6 as their state senator and their state rep, and I look forward to doing that hopefully as their, as their new city council member to this body. And as many of you know, I've worked with many of you over the years in my capacity as the vice chair of the Smyrna Downtown Development Authority, beyond my capacity as state senator and state rep, and so I've got a lot of great relationships here. I hope to continue that in the new position, and particularly, as we move forward in the city of Smyrna, on a lot of great things that we've done over the last quarter century, and we have done a lot. A lot of folks who've moved here in the last 25 years are not really aware, I think, how many things have changed, and for the better. And obviously, I hope to continue that in that capacity as the new council member from Ward 6, but just wanted to come up here and let you all know, as I said, because I've worked with many of them for so many years, and hope to look forward to working with you come after November. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug.
The last person, there's no other business to be brought for this body. I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:00.